Good afternoon, everybody. This is the advertised time and place for the Thursday, October 17th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. Request that you all rise and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We have a couple of public hearings tonight, so we have our Zoom guys ready to go. Good. And the first public hearing is for Twenty Seven Waves LLC with Greg Bergman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board for the record. My name is Greg Bergman, Senior Planner with the Town of Riverhead Planning Department. I did receive from Mr. Israel, the owner of the property, the affidavit of posting and the proof of mailings for the site plan public hearing. What this is, is a site plan application to develop a one-story, 8,775-square-foot medical office building with related site improvements, including parking, drainage, landscape, lighting, along with new utility connections to the Riverhead Water District and Riverhead Sewer District. We did, this is a Type 1 action, we commenced coordinated seeker review with all involved agencies, and I've received comments back from all involved agencies, including sewer, water, highway, Suffolk County Planning Commission, and Suffolk County DPW. Just for the public's knowledge, this site will be accessed from Commerce Drive. There will be no direct access to County Route 58 through correspondence with the Suffolk County DPW. The DPW will actually create some defined lanes of travel as you come off of Commerce Drive onto County Route 58. Right now, it's kind of just undefined lanes of travel, so that will be done as a result in connection with this subdivision. Beyond that, that's the general scope of the project. I would open it up if the board has any questions or if any members of the public have any question.
I have a question, a question, a W A question. Just wanted to find out, on the, on the south side of the property, there's a whole bunch of trees, nice tall trees. Are they going to remain?
I'm not sure. If those trees are existing, they may exist on the Panera Bread property. If they're on Panera's site, they would not be affected in any way. The applicant does propose some landscaping around the parking lot, some additional trees and shrubs and bushes.
Okay, so they belong to Panera?
I believe so, yes.
Greg, the question I had is, I think the last meeting you wanted sidewalks?
Yeah, I mean, it's a recommendation. I did bring up the fact that the entire Warsaw Park subdivision, which is the Commerce Drive subdivision, lacks sidewalks. Good planning practice to incorporate them. I'm not really sure how the rest of the park got developed without sidewalks, but to provide pedestrian connections to a proposed medical office, I think that would just be good planning, and I would recommend that be a condition of approval.
Because I think there was something said that the, you don't know if it's going to be a medical building, it could be retail, and if it is retail, at least, you know, you have a sidewalk to walk to Panera or whatever, instead of along the road.
So the application does propose a medical office. Medical office in terms of, you know, sanitary density, parking requirements, would be the most intense permitted use under the Business Center Zoning Use District. So, I mean, in the event that the site went to a retail use, it's more than adequately parked for it, so it really would just be a change of use. But they are planning the site for the most intense permitted uses under the current zoning. But again, I stick by my recommendation of incorporating sidewalks into the design.
Site plan dark sky compliant?
Yes, sir.
Anybody from the public? He took all my thunder.
I move we close the public hearing.
Richard, it's a public hearing, so you have to state your name for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Richard Israel of Richmond Realty Corp., and I represent Twenty Seven Waves LLC as an owner and a consultant for its partners. I have submitted to the staff the affidavit of posting and mailing for this hearing. Our company has developed eight out of the 10 lots of this commercial subdivision, originally known as Warsaw Park, and is currently known as Riverhead Commerce Park. We have purchased the last remaining vacant lot and are proposing to build an 8,775-square-foot office building, meeting the code for medical occupancy. The building has been designed generally to match the existing seven other buildings that we've built in the park. The building frontage on Commerce Drive, which is a public road, has the availability of public utilities, including public water and sewer. The intersection of Commerce Drive and Old Country Road is governed by a traffic light. The county DOT has requested that we restripe Commerce Drive at this intersection to create a right-hand turning lane to help the flow of traffic, and we've agreed to do that. The staff has requested the concept of a cross-easement from the adjacent property for our west. I'm not a fan of this, as it will reduce the parking, which will exist on our property, and implies that people from the adjacent property have the right to park on our property. I would like the board to consider excusing this easement of a cross-easement to the west property. If you know the west property, it was an industrial property, it's been converted into retail, and it doesn't have a lot of parking per se for the public on its front. Its uses are limited, so it's been working, you know, it doesn't overflow or this or that. So that was the one question. And the other question was the sidewalks. It's been 25 years since I've started building in there, and no site plan prior to this has ever asked for sidewalks or required it. Most of the traffic into this park, most of the buildings are medical and the like. Most people travel by car back and forth. The little bit of pedestrian traffic that exists is maybe an employee walking over to Panera Bread for lunch. Panera Bread itself does not have a parking, a sidewalk that leads from Route 58. So we're basically going to be building a sidewalk to nowhere, because, whatever. So I can't tell you the reason why we originally never put in sidewalks or the like, but again, we don't find people walking down this street. Most people do come by car, and that's been pretty much the traffic pattern in there. I've always followed your guys' rules and regs. If it's something that you guys want, of course, you can have it, it's just going to kind of look very silly that all the other lawns make it to the curb and the plantings and everything else that we have in there. You know, we try to keep the park as pretty as possible. We always are replacing parking lots and landscaping and everything else to keep it nice. To answer Joe's question, that row of Arbivides was planted as part of the Panera site plan, and we've tried to melt into that with our site plan. So those are my two questions, which obviously staff has brought up.
Rich, the only, the question on the cross-easement is not so much for parking, but because of the traffic on 58, if they could at least come out to Commerce Drive, there's a light. There's no light where the, the commercial places. Very tough to make a left, you can make a right. So in other words, if they, the cross-easement to go through your property, get on Commerce Drive, you now have a light.
Right.
That would be the biggest.
I do understand the concept of cross-easement. Maybe here, maybe we can do it as a one-way, that maybe I would only lose one spot, because we're really only trying to direct traffic that will want to go east on 58.
Exactly, exactly.
And possibly, if we locate it somewhere, we may only lose one spot that's 10 feet wide. Maybe we can figure that a one-way would take up 12 feet, so if we put it on one of the ends of the curves. The other thing you have to look at when you look at this site to the next-door neighbor, their building, basically, it's the side yard of their building where this building is. Panera basically uses up their, we'll call it their front lot or where their parking exists. So a person would actually have to pull north to the side of the building to then make a right-hand turn onto our property and then out. But I was thinking about it, that maybe if the easement was a one-way easement, which directs people to go eastbound on 58, to go to the light, maybe that's something. You've got to remember that medical, and it even shows in your code, they are the most intense use for parking. You know, people come, they stay, sometimes, you know, whatever. So we believe that we have to create as much parking as we physically can. So as you try to steal one, two, possibly three spaces, it does affect the people utilizing the building. And, you know, so those are my concerns as an owner, as an operator, to keep everybody happy. So we can gladly discuss it, figure it out, and the like. Whether these easements ever get opened is a whole nother issue, you know, depending on changes of uses and things of the future, which is, all these things are directed.
Understood. Thank you. All right. Any other speakers?
I have another question. It just came up. Greg? On Panera's lot, the south side, is that curbed?
Meaning Panera's frontage on 58?
On Route 58, yes.
Yeah, there is, I mean, there's curbing and sidewalks on the 58 frontage. Again, to Mr. Israel's point, can't explain why none of the other sites had sidewalks. I understand it may not be pedestrian-friendly, but, I mean, I'll defer to the board. Regarding the one-way cross-access, I mean, as I detailed in my report, that was really the concern, is that people coming from that commercial shopping center have no signal, so if they are going eastbound on 58, you know, you're essentially crossing over three or four lanes of traffic to try to make a left. So I would have no objection to a one-way cross-access from that commercial site. That way, it's not a lot of back and forth, but at least that would allow someone to access a light. The parking lot could be easily signed with, you know, parking for medical office tenants only. I would have no objection to that one-way, just to allow, this is really our last opportunity to allow for that cross-access, so I would have no objection to that.
Compromise.
Yep.
Thank you, Greg. Gentlemen, anything else?
Move the public hearing, or move we close the public hearing?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Hi.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries. Moving on, another public hearing, so speakers would recommend that you state your name and address. Project 58 Restaurant Conversion Public Hearing with Heather.
Good afternoon, members of the board for the record. Heather Chojonowski, Planner for the Town of Riverhead. This is a public hearing for a site plan application entitled Project 58 Restaurant Conversion. It's a site plan application seeking approval to convert an existing vacant 5,233-square-foot building into a restaurant with 56 seats, along with site improvements, including facade changes, upgraded sight lighting, landscaping, re-striping, grease trap insulation, and seven new parking stalls on a parcel of land located at 1199 Old Country Road in Riverhead within the Business Center Zoning Use District. And I will note for the board that we received the affidavit of posting and mailing, the mailing receipts and pictures of the posters on the property. So I'll hand it off to the applicant and their representatives if the board has any questions.
Thank you.
Charles Cuddy for the applicant. Mr. Asta is also here, he's the owner of this property. Heather has prepared a significant report that I think is part of your papers that you have in front of you.
Yes, just to recap, we had discussed the staff report and the site plan at the September 19th meeting. I had an approval resolution on, which was subsequently tabled, and we moved a resolution to schedule this public hearing.
And I think that covers in great detail all of the elements of this application. I would like to say that the Department of Public Works responded, and the engineer for this project is taking care of their concerns, which basically had to do with ADA parking, an ADA handicap ramps, and we're going to take care of that. I think that at this point in time, if there are any questions, both of us are here to answer them, but I think it's been covered, as I say, with her report.
I have no questions. Gentlemen, anybody?
No. Just the fence that's along the east side of the bill, is that your fence?
With the barbed wire?
If you want to approach the podium?
This is a public hearing, you have to say it on the record.
The owner, name is Tony Asta. We haven't really figured out if it's our fence or the Fortunoff property's fence. I mean, if it's mine, yeah, so we'll take out the barbed wire, I don't think it's a jail.
Right. Because you have the one tree right in the middle of it.
We'll remove that when they do the repave, remove the tree for sure. That is on my property.
Right.
The fence, we don't know yet. So once we figure that out, if it's theirs, I can't touch it, obviously.
Right.
If it's ours, then we'll, you know, give it to the barbed wire.
And you're taking away that small part of the building in the back?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah. That thing only houses an oil tank, they used to heat with oil.
Heat and oil and the meters around the?
Well, we're going to have to move those to the, close to Gis Harrison Avenue. You know, Latrigen said they're going to, not a problem.
And you go into natural gas instead of the?
Correct. Correct.
Anybody from the audience like to comment? We've got a motion, gentlemen?
I will close the public hearing for Project 58.
Moved and seconded. Gentlemen, may we have a vote? Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Yes.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the motion carries. All right, moving on to discussion items. Heather, we need you up again. Kent Animal Shelter Site Plan Amendment.
Do we have anyone here for Kent? I will try to be brief with this. As the majority of the board is aware, Kent Animal Shelter received final site plan approval for a site plan application proposing to demolish and reconstruct two of the buildings on the site, along with site improvements, back in September of 2023 by Resolution Number Since then, some changes have occurred. Kent was unable to fully reconstruct the kennel building, so they are doing renovations to the building. They also are no longer sprinklering it, so they have to do an onsite hydrant, and because of that, some of the utility locations and the water lines had to change between the fire marshal, the water district, the applicant's design professionals. The plan that you have before you today satisfies fire code requirements, water district requirements. So with that, I have an approval resolution on to amend the existing site plan, subject to a few conditions. The water district superintendent did ask that an RPZ either be confirmed or installed on the cat cottage, that's on the eastern, the building on the eastern side of the property. It's not being renovated as part of this site plan application, but he wants to ensure that there's backflow prevention there. In addition, the architectural review board did review the revised elevations. They're actually as-built, because during the time of when the initial site plan was approved, building permits were issued, and again, we've been going back and forth for a few months trying to satisfy the conditions, you know, to make the site as safe and efficient as possible. The construction continued, so the elevations did change. The architectural review board had asked that there be an overhang or some sort of designation for the entryway to the kennel building. I'm comfortable with them making that recommendation. They do have a meeting next week, so realistically, we would want the applicant's design professional to bring the revisions back to the board. The planning board's approval would be subject to that, in addition to anything that the water district needs in terms of applicable fees, letter of water availability, and they have to update their fire marshal and building permits to reflect these up-to-date site plans that will be signed by the planning board chair. Other than that, all of the original conditions and restrictions in Resolution 2023-080 would remain in full force and effect. So this is just to get them up to date in terms of planning, site plan approval, and let them continue with their construction.
Okay.
Any questions?
Quick question. Why did they discontinue the sprinkler use?
I don't know, to be honest, without representation here. I don't know if it was an issue of funding, if they couldn't, you know, complete the entire demolition and reconstruction. You know, because they were originally sprinkling the building, they didn't have to have a private hydrant on-site. The alternative, if you don't sprinkler building, is to have a private hydrant within a certain distant, distance pursuant to fire code. I don't know if that's a cheaper option for them or what the exact reasoning was, but they decided to do a significant renovation rather than a total demo and rebuild of the kennel building.
Heather, is all your changes, are they all part of the amendment?
Yes. So the plans that you have before you reflect the new hydrant location, any utilities that needed to be moved. The only things, it's the elevations that would need to be reviewed and approved by the architectural review board, and the confirmation that there's an RPZ either already at the cat cottage building or needs to be installed. And Arthur Rast, who works for Marty Semuski's office, he's been working with Frank Mancini, and they're, you know, on the same page as far as what's needed for that.
The plan shows a significant amount of sewage work.
Yes, so they're installing, as part of the original site plan approval, they're doing a large amount of sanitary work, because for the kennel, you need to have separate sanitary systems for human versus animal waste. That was all part of the initial approval. I think because they had to put the onsite hydrant, some of those lines may have changed, but the health department updated approval is on your site plans that you have.
Yeah.
And in addition, all of the drainage work that was proposed as a part of the original site plan approval, that's not changing. They have to do a significant amount of work.
Is the site going to continue to operate, or are they going to have to close from?
They've been operating, and that's one of the things. I know a lot of the animals that were housed in the kennel are being temporarily relocated right now, but there are people on-site. I know the gentleman who's doing the work on all of the drainage infrastructure has said that it's, you know, in order to keep it safe, he's doing it a little bit at a time, which has resulted in, you know, numerous inspection requests, but he's, you know, doing it per the approved plans, and again, little by little, as opposed to having to shut the whole thing down, because they do have the veterinary clinic there that's still in operation. Again, the cat cottage is not being touched, and they have other, you know, the cat retirement home, where they have older animals that can't really be rehoused. So, you know, they're trying to make it work as best as they can and as safe as they can.
Okay. And I, Joe, they're really, there's a lot of work being done there, and only a little bit at a time, because there are people walking around, and workers and people that are attending the shelter, and the gentleman's doing a tremendous job, doing a great job, you know, with the trees and the five houses that are there. It's not, it's not an easy.
Yeah. So I mean, in terms of the site changes, I mean, they are, they had to come back for an amended site plan, but, you know, it wasn't a significant deviation, so no public hearing necessary. I have the resolution on to approve it, subject to the conditions that we spoke about, and the ARB meeting is next week, so hopefully they'll get that taken care of, and they can get everything up to date and hopefully not change it again.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Heather. Let's go on to discussion item number two, TGOC Real Estate Holdings LLC with Greg.
Thank you. So this is just a update on the seeker status for a proposed development out in Calverton. It is between J and R Steakhouse and Maloski's Poultry Farm. As the board will recall, this is a two-part application. There is a major subdivision application, as well as a site plan that proposed to develop a currently vacant 15.8 parcel of land, which would result in seven new residential, single-family residential lots, creation of a stormwater management parcel, an onsite sewage treatment plant, as well as a mixed-use parcel, which would be developed with approximately 30,000 square feet of ground floor commercial space and 36 one-bedroom apartments on the upper floors. The board initiated, classified it as a Type 1 action, initiated coordinated review. We've since received comments back from involved agencies. The next step is a determination of significance. So the resolution that's before the board currently, which includes the Part 2 and the Part 3 of the Full Environmental Assessment Form, for this board would assume lead agency and issue a positive declaration requiring the formal preparation of environmental impact statement. I'll just go over very briefly, I did post the Part 2 and the Part 3 on the website yesterday, but just for any members of the public who wish to see the video at a later date, I'll just briefly go over the Part 3, which is the evaluation and magnitude and importance of the project impacts to support the determination. Regarding Section 4 of the Full EAF Impacts on Groundwater, the proposed project will require an extension of the Riverhead Water District Extension 37R, which only currently serves a portion of the site. The applicant is currently working with the Riverhead Water District for the preparation of a map and plan, which will detail the necessary improvements to the water district in order to serve the property with domestic and fire service water. Regarding the Suffolk County Groundwater Management Zone, it's located in Groundwater Management Zone 3, which permits a sanitary density of 300 gallons per day per acre. Based on the site's 15.8-acre size, it has an allowable sanitary flow of approximately 4,761 gallons per day, where the proposed development has an anticipated sanitary flow of about 11,100 gallons per day in an area where public sewers are not available. In terms of Section 7 for the Full EAF Impacts on Plants and Animals, the site is identified as potentially containing habitat conducive to the northern long-eared bat, tiger salamander, coastal baron's buckmoth. Again, this is just based on the Full EAF Part 1, which is populated by the EAF mapping tool, and it may result in the elimination of said habitats, and would ultimately result in the removal of approximately 14 acres, removal of 14 acres of wooded forested lands. Section 10 of the EAF, Impact on Historic and Archaeological Resources, the project site is located within a potentially archaeologically sensitive area. Consultations with the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation are being undertaken, and the Phase 1A and 1B archaeological surveys have been recommended by SHIPPO. And then Section 13, Impact on Transportation, the proposed development, based on the size and the uses, has the potential for significant impacts to existing traffic patterns along Middle Country Road based on trip generation and potential conflicts with existing traffic levels and patterns. So for those reasons, we're recommending a POSDEC, which would require, again, formal EIS process. The next step in the seeker process would be for the applicant to prepare a draft scope. We would then hold a scoping on that document. At the board's discretion, there can either be a public meeting for that, or that can be done by written comment. I leave that to the board's discretion.
Now, I think we're going to probably, I'm speaking for my Now, I think we're going to probably, I'm speaking for myself, but these fellows may agree, that we'll have a public, public scoping, because it's a big project, a sensitive area. You guys all agree with that?
Yes.
All right. So beyond that, pretty straightforward resolution. Next step in the process, nothing we have not seen before.
Are they still under work stop order?
So I did, I have gotten, you brought to my attention that there was some work out there. I want to stop short of saying they were clearing. They were removing some scrub brush in order to conduct the Phase 1A and 1B archaeological surveys. SHPO has certain requirements in terms of where they need to start digging test pits. So they are preparing a map. There is an exemption in our code that allows for limited clearing. We understand that in order to analyze and develop these types of projects, they need to access the site. You know, they may need to do test holes, they may need to do these archaeological surveys.
They can access it now, that's for sure.
Well, I mean, previously, they would have no access to that site. I tried to walk through there when I did my initial site assessment. Very thick brush, really was not lending itself to do any of these required analyses in order to understand potential impacts. So they will be providing a plan identifying the limited areas that were cleared, and it would just be for the conduction of that, the Phase 1A and 1B surveys.
Anybody?
Nope.
That's enough. Thank you, sir. Okay, public comments on all resolutions. Anybody?
I have one more discussion, though.
You do? I don't.
Yeah, the amendment, we added 408 Middle Road, change. That's the one I gave you up in the office, I gave you the five.
Okay, so we're going to go to the third discussion item, which is 408 Middle Road, zone change application. With Greg.
Thank you. So this was a change of zone application that was submitted for a piece of property located on the north side of Middle Road, located at 408 Middle Road. It's currently located within the retirement community, the RC zoning district, zoning use district. The applicant is seeking a change of zone to Residence A40. Now, a change of zone application is an action of the town board. Town code requires a referral and a recommendation of the planning board. The long and short of it is that the entire block of properties on the north side of Middle Road in this area are all zoned retirement community, sort of the result of painting kind of a broad stroke when creating zoning maps. Maybe there was some thought initially that this site may have been picked up by one of those developments and incorporated into a retirement community. That's never happened, so I did discuss this with the town board this morning at a work session. The property's improved with a one-story, single-family residence with a basement, as well as a detached accessory structure, which was previously a garage. The property owner did some illegal improvements to that detached structure and created two accessory apartments. They're currently in justice court, facing those violations. They made an application to the building department to create one legal accessory apartment, but based on our current code for the accessory apartments, accessory apartments are not permitted in the retirement community zoning district. So they're seeking a change of zone to Residence A40. Would not result in any change to the character of the area, would not result in a change to the existing development, aside from the proposed improvements to the detached garage. All of the properties to the east are all zoned Residence A40. Direct on the south side of Middle Road, it's all Residence A40. So it's not something that would be at all out of character with the area. It's really, would allow the building department, if the town board grants a change of zone, would allow the building department to actually issue a permit for one legal accessory apartment that complies with the code. It would allow for inspections to ensure safety and conformity with the town code. So this morning, the town board generally seemed supportive of the change of zone. They wanted them to get through justice court and clear up those existing violations before they took any formal action. But we're just here as a requirement of the code to refer the application to the planning board. If the board has any comments, concerns, recommendations, we would then transmit them back to the town board for their consideration.
And we'll have to wait for a while until we see an actual resolution for us to do.
So what I would, if you have concerns, comments, questions, let me know, and what I can do is I can, for the next meeting, I can prepare a resolution that sort of summarizes the planning board's position on it, that would then transmit that recommendation to the town board. This is honestly the first change of zone application that I've worked on since I've been, you know, a little plus, a little over eight years. We typically don't entertain them, because a lot of times, people will come to the counter and they obviously want to change the zone to intensify the use. This is actually accomplishing the opposite. It's sort of reducing in intensity.
Which comes first?
In terms of?
In other words, the town board still has to act.
So, the planning board, the planning board, we will, the town board wanted justice court to be cleared up before they take any formal action. In the meantime, the board, if I could get your recommendations, general support, comments, we can adopt a planning board resolution to transmit those recommendations back to the town board, which they would ultimately consider prior to taking any action.
Okay. Certainly would like to see legalized, for sure. Everybody got on the same page?
So Greg, all he want, all he want to do is go back to R40?
So they want to, they want to convert it to Residence A40, which is a one-acre residential zone.
Is that, is that what it was before the adult community came in?
I have, I'd have to double-check the old zoning maps. I don't want to misspeak, so I'm not sure. I mean, I'm sure it was a residential zone.
Right.
But, you know, the town had half-acre and one-acre zoning, so I don't know off the top of my head what the old zoning was. So is it, is it fair to say the planning board generally supports the change of zone?
Yeah.
I mean, we can keep it pretty, pretty narrowly tailored to that.
Everything else in that area is that, yeah, so it was.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the property owner directly to the east with a single-family residence could create an accessory apartment, but based on the zoning, this property owner couldn't. So if the general sentiment of the board is for support for the change of zone, I can just draft up a very quick resolution and transmit that to the town board.
Okay. Okay. Now we're going to go to public comments on resolutions. Anybody? Let's do resolutions, gentlemen.
I'll move Resolution Number 77, assumes lead agency, and adopts the negative declaration on the site plan for Riverhead Mazda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
I'll move Resolution 78 for Riverhead Mazda to schedule a public hearing for the site plan application. So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
I move Resolution Number 2024-79, Delali O'Sard Farm LLC minus subdivision, resolution granting an extension of minus subdivision approval for the subdivision application entitled Delali O'Sard Farm LLC.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
Resolution 2024-080, Kent Animal Shelter Site Plan Amendment, resulting granted approval for the amendment site plan application of Kent Animal Shelter, previously approved by Resolution 2023-080, dated September 21st, 2023.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
I'm move Resolution 2024-081, TGOC Real Estate Holdings, to assume the lead agency status and issue a positive deck. So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
Okay, I'll move, I'll move Resolution Number 82, grants approval, grants approval of the minus subdivision entitled Manor Lane Subdivision.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
I move Resolution Number 2024-083, Jets 139 LLC minus subdivision, resolution granting approval for a minus subdivision application entitled Jets 139 LLC.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries. Before we go into public comments, I'd like somebody to make a motion to take Resolution Number 72 off the table, which grants administrative appeal for Project 58, the old mattress store.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Moved and seconded to take it off the table. Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote aye. All right, so off the table. Can we get somebody to move Resolution Number 72?
Before we vote on it, I just wanted to say if we could adopt as amended, so I'd like to strike the fifth whereas on page two, where it said that we waived the public hearing requirement. Since we had the public hearing, that would be taken out.
Okay.
And then we would add the planning board scheduled a public hearing on the site plan application by Resolution Number 2024-073, dated September 19th, 2024, and then whereas a public hearing on the site plan application was held and closed on October 17th, 2024. And then I would like to add one condition to the plan revisions and 5B of conditions, so it would be number five, changes required by Suffolk County Department of Public Works letter dated September 23rd, 2024, which Mr. Cuddy discussed, they're working on it already. So if we could adopt as amended.
I'll move 72 as amended. Second.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries. Thank you, Heather. Good luck to you, my friend.
Thank you very much.
I'll move the minutes of September 19th, 2024. So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries?
I'll move resolution, I'll move, I'm sorry. I'll move the minutes of October 3rd, 2024.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries? Staff, any other business? Okay, good job again, as usual. Correspondence? Any correspondence? No hate mail? Good. Not today, good. Our next meeting day is Thursday, November 7th, at 6:00. Have a great week, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Enjoy your vacation.
Yeah, thank you.
Motion to close?
No, I'll be back.
Aye. Motion to close? Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?